Welcome, I am opening up, calling the meeting order for the December 12th, 2023, Air Planning, Meeting of the Air Planning Board. Our first item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Come on over.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. So, I'm gonna turn this over to Danny in just a second, so I just want to say a couple things. First of all, Jeff is not gonna be here tonight. Jeff got into a cycling accident on Sunday. He is well, he is safe. Last I heard, I talked to him yesterday, you know, he had an appointment with a bone doctor and they're gonna do all the checking, but he seemed very optimistic and he wasn't in pain, thank goodness. So we'll wish him the best and I'm sure he'll be at our next scheduled meeting. We have a light agenda and the reason I decided, instead of saying, "Let's just skip it today", is I thought today would be a good time, not only to catch up on stuff, to review, remember the things we said we were gonna do at the beginning of the year?
The beginning of those last weeks.
Exactly, so we had four things and we're gonna talk about those, where we stand on those. And Danny is gonna introduce us to thinking about the major versus the minor site plan review. And he started with a document that draws upon what some local towns have done and we can have a, I think it's, I found it fascinating to read through and we'll have a good discussion. Then we'll have the project status updates, et cetera, et cetera, and that's it. So, project status updates, sir.
So, as of right now, so 42 Park Street, the decision was stamped in, the board, I'll just need the board members that actually decided, you know, voted on the decision to, that was you, Nathan and Jeff, to sign the plans.
Are they upstairs?
I have them upstairs, so I can bring them down after the meeting is over and then we can have you guys sign them and then I'll have to figure out how I can get Jeff to sign that.
You might have to come to him.
Yeah, I may have to go to him, so we'll figure that out. 42 Park Street will be going before the zoning board for their special permit on that tiny little triangle that's within the setback and that's on the 20th. So they're moving along and their 20-day appeal period ends on the 25th of December, so.
Okay, good.
So they're moving along on that.
They have to go to Concom too as well, for the brook?
Yes, they have to go for an RDA. Have they reached out to you yet?
They did, they haven't filed anything yet and the meeting is Thursday, so it will go into January now.
Okay, alright, I will, I'll reach out to Justin and let him know that, you know, to reach out to Heather about that.
I did, excuse me, I did call Danny and ask, but why they needed a special permit instead of a variance, so you know the depth of that?
Yeah, yes, so.
Somewhere in there it says it.
Yes, so, the way it works is because it's not making it more non-conforming, it's already a non-conforming lot and so the area that they're going within the setback is not more non-conforming than the other part, the outside portions of the house. All it is, is a special permit and not a variance. That's within the regulations, that's what Charlie says.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And I can't think of any other projects?
We're just waiting, we're still waiting on the substation from National Grid. Don't know when they're coming, but I know it's coming at some point.
And that's the Park Street?
Yes. I did have someone reach out to me today about a parcel on, I think it's 7 Park Street, it's that one right in front of the.
Garage?
The garage, correct. And it's a possibility of someone getting that for a parking lot to expand for the air family, for the air family.
Pharmacy, I think it's called.
No kidding! So that's a possibility there, they're looking at that. And so we talked about that today and possibilities on that. And then, that's really it for right now.
That was the first project I worked on as a board member, was the air pharmacy. That was the very first one.
Heather's here too, so, the conservation restriction for Shake a Mill Pond.
Yes.
Is that done?
Unfortunately, the state doesn't have a reviewer at the moment, so all CRs are being put on hold.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, so I know Mr. Aho is not very happy, as this is, possibly could hold up his street acceptance.
The language is there that could hold it up?
Yes, and I know, you know, we've been in talks, we've been going back and forth with him and Heather and I and their attorney, attorney Shockett.
Alan Shockett.
Yeah, so we've been going back and forth just trying to figure out.
Figure out the best.
Yeah, the best way to deal with this, but as of right now, it's kind of in, it's in the state's hands, because they kind of, they have to do their initial review, comments and all that stuff before we can even, before we get that back.
So are we gonna have to have some kind of a planning board decision to extend that? If, I believe the language basically says that you can't get the last occupancy or you can't do something at the end unless you have it all done.
Yeah, no, so they can't, they can't close out the permit or street acceptance until that's done. And they have, they have quite a few of other things they have to deal with, but we've already given them their.
Pretty much sold out.
Yeah, yeah, I've already given them a review of the decision and the information that they need to be getting in, but that's the biggest thing holding them up right now.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay. And, what about Panther Place, do you hear anything about that anymore?
No, I mean, the last time I spoke with him, he had said, so Panther Place is, what's his?
Levine.
Yeah, Joe Levine, yes, we had talked about it and he said it's gonna be a couple years, it's not gonna be, he thinks he's gonna be doing it in, you know, four and five a year.
Four or five a year, something like that.
Yeah, he doesn't expect to be full build out right away.
Is it, I thought we should take a close look at, you know, he's working in that first road on the left, which I forget the name of, and I thought we should require that road to be in a better condition than it is right now for him to continue getting occupied. I guess we didn't put language in there. So for instance, you know, it's supposed to have a rain garden in the middle of the cul-de-sac. It's completely unconstructed, so it's just muddy and, you know.
Yeah, so.
I thought we would have a better handle on, if he's gonna be that slow is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
That's what I was kind of getting at, if he's gonna be that slow, should we go back and say, geez, we'd like to get at least this, this road done or does water put in or drainage done, you know, stormwater, whatever we have to do?
I, what I'll do is I'll go out there and I'll take a look at it and see what the current state is and I'll talk to Dan about it and Matt as well, because we can't after the fact go back and tell them.
Well, we can't tell them, but we can ask them.
We can ask them, yes, correct, we can ask them, but typically, so I don't know what the state of it is right now, there's a possibility, the reason the rain garden hasn't been put in is because maybe it's being used as a temporary settling basin, there's different.
It's just junky.
So I will, I'll take a look at it and figure out what it is, what's going on, on that.
I feel like there's something else, but I can't, it's just not coming to me right now.
Well, we had the small unit down here, but that's done on Central Ave, those are four units.
The four units, yeah, they already closed.
We didn't have.
Charlie closed out the permit on that.
But we were supposed to get ASBILs at the end, I think, if we were to get, that's another issue, we have to double check that we get the ASBIL drawings at the end of these projects.
Yes.
Which is definitely one of our requirements.
It is, and it's a conversation I've already had with Charlie and Mike about this and if you saw in the decision for 42 Park Street, that is, it's spelled out in it.
Yep.
So that in the future, this doesn't hap, that doesn't happen. And, you know, it requires an ASBIL prior to receiving your certificate of occupancy and if there's gonna be multiple certificate of occupancies, then a, an ASBIL must be done for the time that you're requesting the certificate of occupancy, so we know what's been built up, what's completed at that point. So it'd be, it serves as an interim ASBIL until the final project is done.
Yeah, because that's kind of what came up with the Panther Place thing, is I was curious if we had any kind of sequencing in the requirements, but I'm not sure that we do.
Yeah, I mean, based on my review, there really isn't a sequencing plan that was spelled out as to how it was going to be done, which is something that in the new decisions is spelled out and it's going, and it says, that's prior to construction of stite work, because it helps us for our pre-construction meeting, understanding a construction estimate, you know, the schedule, so we know what they're proposing as the timeframe for start to finish for full build out, as well as, you know, how are you sequencing this, this construction? Because, you know, as we all know, it's done in phases, so what are the phases?
Good, thank you, good. So you thought there might be another one?
Yeah, but I guess there isn't.
Oh yeah, but the one he brought up at the last meeting, what's that, is it the SOIA?
Oh yeah, I did, I did update.
Yeah, it's in their court.
Yeah, it's in their court right now, so they're, they had some engineers reaching out to me about, they're working on putting on some principal proposals together for a SOIA about how they're gonna phase the project and maybe redo, maybe do it in phases in several years, just due to, they didn't tell me exactly why, but they're saying, you know, they're gonna be doing it in phases, so they reached out.
So, at the, it seems unbelievable that a full year has gone by, but remember at the beginning of the year, I asked us to think about the things we'd like to do this year, so I thought it'd be wise that this is the last meeting of the year to kind of cap up, you know, to say, well, where, how did that go? So I'll lead off, leap in where you know, and I think we'll all work it out. So, one of the things was four easy trails that we presented to Dan at Skowtway and I don't think we've made any progress on any of those and I think, is that true, I don't think so. What about the one over by, is it the Grove Pond area, remember, was it the little pathway? Did they do any work on that perhaps?
Do you guys remember the, that conversation about the trails, I'm not sure Danny was here for that?
Oh!
I happened to be at a conversation me and you had with Dan and Matt out at Park Street and we did discuss the trails at that point, but that was, that's the, that's all I know.
That was just what we were doing, I asked him about on the side after that meeting. Okay, so the long and the short of it was that, maybe a year and a half ago, when you and I were walking together, we had an idea that where are trails, where's the potential connection of trails in town that would fall on existing rights of way that are owned by the town, that maybe could be connected, all could get us better connections to the rail trail.
Okay.
So we ended up meeting with DPW and coming up with four that were potentials in no particular order, one was going behind the hospital.
Yep.
Connecting through that field to the rail trail.
That would be along the sewer easement for a good part.
Along a sewer easement.
Right.
That's controlled by the town, so that was the other part of it. The other discussion was if there were easements that the town had, could we land on top of those easements? So that was one and the way it was left is that DPW would call the hospital and work that out and then we would basically just go out and prune it and just make it, you know, but there's no real construction involved, no, we weren't gonna put, you know, material on the ground or anything, just cut it, because in the years gone by, there were people using that almost on a daily basis, but it got overgrown, so there's been no one using it. But I used to see him walking there quite a bit at noon time and what it does is it makes, the other concept here was to create loops.
Yeah.
So the trails created walking loops, so that one went down through the field, went to the rail trail where they would go north and come right back up at the next street over, which happened to be right over the Groton Line on existing trails that are there, so you had a loop. The other one was potentially, the one we'll talk about that looks like it's gonna happen is right next to the lots that just Mr. Aho just bought and the Grove, the corner of Grove Pond, the end of Marshall Street.
Okay.
Where it goes across an old, an old bridge that's there, a culvert that's there that needs to be fixed and they do have a budget and they're going out to bid to get that fixed. And they went to conservation for a rain garden or something there, so that's gonna get constructed.
So with the.
It's an existing area, but beat up.
Yeah, it's existing, so just improve the guardrails or whether the rails were on either side, they need work and the other thing was just maybe fill with gravel, whatever, just to, just to take out the water.
Great, so they could collect some water and stuff like that. And that's a place where people walk right now, but on one side is another set of trails that people don't use on the DPW side that goes right around the edge of Grove Pond.
Yep.
It dead ends, but it's a nice walking trail.
It is.
So it ended up being, and you can walk to the so-called community gardens in the DPW land that's out there, or you can go back to the street and come around, you know, by Wendy's and the Rotary and that kind of stuff, so that's gonna happen. The simplest one of all, I thought, was off the rail trail on the end of, I think it's Howard Street.
Howard, yep.
Which is, it looks as though it's just a piece of land there, but it's actually, the right of way goes down to the rail trail.
Yeah.
And it's just bushes and stuff, so we, they were talking about doing that last winter, nothing happened, now they could potentially do it, so just clear it out and you would have to put some hot pack, you know, gravel or something, stone or whatever to get you to the rail trail.
But once that's done, the thing that's nice about that one is then that opens up for any of the athletes to do running, they could go down, they could.
All kinds of loops.
From the school down to Howard and then right to the rail trail and back up again by the, I mean, that's what the beauty of it is, is that it enables all this kind of, these new loops.
And there is a trail there now, but it's very seldom used because it's kind of cutting into someone's, the edge of the neighbor's yard. We actually saw the neighbor, Jonathan and I, and they said, wow, this would be great, no, they didn't, we were concerned about the neighbor.
They were fine.
And the last one, which was the really cool one, was the bridge.
Yeah.
But that's very complicated.
And that one, you know, that one, I, I just ran into a wall, I couldn't, I can't, I couldn't even find out which rail authority has, has the bridge. And no one really wants to talk about, so if you talk to Pan Am, they'll put you to somebody and they'll put you off because this is the last thing on their damn plate. I understand why, you know, it's basically a semi, basically abandoned rail bridge, so why are they gonna put effort into it? The shame, the thing about it is if we.
Do you know what we're talking about, it's way out on the western side of town by where we just did the, remember LP tanks?
Remember the LP, right, so if you went past.
LNG tanks, whatever.
Yep, yep.
You would come up to the river and you'd come up and that's where the bridge is, but the same, the thing, the beauty of it is that, once you're on the other side, this is whole trail system that Groton's developed.
It's in the Groton Forest.
So the beautiful thing is that this, on the other side of the bridge, our side, there's plenty of room for parking, et cetera, so it's, it would be a perfect trailhead for so many people, you know, and then they could load up their bikes, what have you, boom, cross the bridge and they're onto the whole trail network, which would be really nice.
And you can do it now, it's just that, but it's not under our control, you know, people do walk it, but it's kind of tricky.
It is a little tricky, there are gaps between the ties and the ties are rotted.
You'd have to put up.
Yeah, you'd have to.
You'd have to put something.
You have to build it, but, but the, underneath the wood though, it is a steel frame.
Oh yeah.
And I, I mean, I'm not a structural engineer, but I suspect it's solid enough for pedestrians and bicycles, you know?
Right.
I don't know if it can hold a train anymore, but it doesn't have to.
So the idea was to either get these on a list with DPW and then look at potential like Mass Trail Grants, some kind of grant piece to throw some money at it off the town. The town is gonna do one, the other one on Howard, the town could just do it with the guys they have, it's not a big, but the bridge thing would need. So we contacted, we met with Mass Wildlife, who has the office, Ann Gagnon, and they'll land a buttson. So I thought they might be interested in taking the next 30, 40 feet, you know, for the, where the rail is, but they have no interest in that, so they have no interest in walking trails or building trails, Mass Wildlife. They don't, they don't do that, they want open, undeveloped stuff. So even though they were butting it, we just thought we had an answer there, but no interest at all. And who else, you called, you made a few calls trying to figure out who has control of the land and.
Yeah, and I.
MBTA, Pan Am or something.
And now there's a new company managing it.
Oh yeah, that's somebody else.
CSX owns.
Oh yeah, that's right, CSX, CSX.
It's Wyoming and.
Oh, somebody.
Yeah, it's a new, we actually had a meeting with them a couple months ago.
Okay.
They, they just took over the, all of the rails over here, they're gonna be managing it all.
Okay, cool.
So they gave us like their point of contact, but I don't, I don't know if that's, if that's even, if, how far that goes, if that's theirs or not.
So the only thing to report on that is we need to do more work and.
We need to do more.
Talk more to DPW and see what we can get.
We need to do more.
Right, eternally versus going on.
I'm hoping that perhaps in the quiet season between Christmas and New Year's, we could just sit down with Dan again, now talking. Julie and I worked on the midterm review of the master plan and if you remember, we constructed a survey, so not all the town departments, everyone participated and then we assembled the results and we did a meeting in this room with all the department heads and it was a very successful review, I think, if we think, and I'll let Julie chime in as well, of course, you know, what was the big takeaway? And I think the big takeaway is that we understood, we're in a much, I think there's a consensus that the next iteration that we're gonna do is gonna be a simpler document with clearer priorities. And I think that we all agree that one of the problems with the previous master plan is that it's just, there's just too much and it's really not clear what's a priority. And in fact, they actually label things high, medium, low, but when out of 80, a 56 are high priority, that means nothing's high priority, by definition. Next time, we're gonna probably say, you know, by definition, high priority can be no more than say five or 10, to actually make it useful and then take it from there. But I thought the process was well-received, even though it was, you know, kind of ad hoc and we're not professional researchers, but I thought, I thought it went really well. Do you have any?
Yeah, I thought everyone was really receptive and I thought, I found like the little piece of data that was the most interesting to me, just for the work we all do, is I, I did, like a separate piece, like from our intent of what we went into it doing was the piece where we figured and realized that groups that don't have a staff person that work for Town Hall in them.
Yeah.
Really could benefit from just a little bit of that time and support from an employee that's more connected, that that lack of connection is actually stopping a lot of their volunteer work and so a lot of efforts are, are there, but that little connection, that to me was just a fascinating aside that we got from that and I'm not gonna forget that part.
So where, where volunteer committees have a professional connection is what you're saying, they tend to get more production.
Exactly.
They're able to be more effective with their time and then the ones that didn't were able to voice, we're trying to do this, but we're just.
Don't know what to go.
The connection, the final just making it happen seemed, that seemed to be the miss and not for any volunteers' point, but actually just for what that does to just be in the building or to just understand how to kind of make some things happen, there's just something there that, it doesn't always have to maybe be a full-time employee, but a touch base or a point person, I think, would be, I thought that was just a neat learning from the.
I, I agree. The final two, rail and transportation, did you want to talk about, this is not about judging how far you got, it's just like, just talk to us a little bit about what the issues are and if we learned anything.
Oh, I think that the, I guess, perhaps the issues are, at least largely the issues are economic and I think with the, with inflation and costs like, I'm curious why, for example, why is Levine pacing himself, right, is it accessibility to trades? So I think that that's, my understanding is, is, you know, we talked about the MBTA, that they really kept their budget the same as it was in previous years and they usually do like a five-year, I think, budget, so, you know, they, it didn't seem to be appetites for change in, in the air last year or this year. So, aside from, you know, and even what I, what I learned too is that even if there's a legislative declaration, that the, the time it takes for that to come into play is 15, 20 years, right? You look at, so this happening downtown, you know, down in Boston and regions around there with the development of Green Line, it's just, it's, you know, you have a, you have a declaration in the law, but then, very long tail. So that's, perhaps we'll tie into the fourth one, right?
Well.
I can segue to that.
Nice, nice job, yes, so I deliberately saved this for last because it also provides a segue to the future.
Okay, I have one too, but.
Okay, so what I was gonna talk about was the review of our bylaws to see, do we have the correct zoning for the goals that we want? So what was yours?
Mine was a separate project that I was doing besides, is that okay?
Yeah, go for it, yeah, talk to us.
But I had really wanted to work on some best practices and like welcome packet type things to make it more accessible for new volunteers to be comfortable serving in Town Hall and part of the reason I stalled is quite frankly, I will wanna partner with you a bit, Danny, like I would like to write some but run them by you and you being newer, you had more important things to work on, so I just, I have kept it to the side, but I haven't forgotten it. I think the first one, that would be the easiest way to start something like that, would look like, if you remember the best practices or how to be at a site visit, and I actually thought it could maybe pair with a conservation commission, so we could just have one for Town Hall that's just about what to expect, how long they are, whether it's a major site visit or a small site visit and, and kind of talking through that. And so I have no problem doing that in the first half of next year and run them by you, but I, I see it as more of almost like a welcome packet, like what to expect when you're doing that kind of thing.
Yeah, I like, you know, Sonny, when listening to you, I got an idea, it would be in some ways wonderful if on the website, we could have two to three-minute videos from each department just saying, this is what planning is, this is what board of health is, this is what conservation is and what the heck they do and what it's about.
Yeah.
Because, the truth is, before I served on this board, I had no idea what planning does.
Most people don't.
No.
Because we're not educated that way, we're educated in the craziest way.
Still trying to figure it out.
You know, we have to memorize all the rules, constitutional rules for, you know, federal elections and we know nothing about how local governance works, you know, many of us and not, not all of us. So, oh, well, thank you and I hope, let's pick that up for next year too.
There was a reason to pause.
So, the next one was the idea of reviewing, again, reviewing the bylaws and regulations to see if they're really aligned and there's so many different things, there's, there's the unit sizes, remember the minimum size of 750 is one, there's the issue of should we open up multifamily and duplexes in A1, A2, what are some other, parking is a huge one, whether the parking is onerous and that should change, because it seems that, you know, the one hand, the master plans, like for a clear example, you know, obviously there's a favor, the idea is a priority or a preference to infill build closer to the center of town and near infrastructure rather than having to build on the outer fringes that requires new infrastructure to be constructed, which is far more expensive and, and less fiscally responsible, et cetera. That's a big project, but if it was important last year, it seems to me even more important this year. So, what I would say about that is, I'll ask Ken and anyone else to talk about how far we've gotten so far, but I think the real important thing is to, to really give that more emphasis this year, coming up, and then deliberate about what can we do in the spring meeting and what should be put off to the fall meeting. That's gonna be a clear, because, you know, there may be some, we may not be able to do all the things we want at one meeting, we have to break it out, so we may need to think strategically about the correct way to do that. But I see it as critically important, I mean, we have empty spaces on Main Street that have been empty for years that are just not getting the, the development that we want and it's probably not gonna change until we make some changes.
Yes.
Danny, do you want to weigh in?
Well, so just on a couple of the topics, so the 750, you know, as Ken and Nathan know, we actually have a meeting tomorrow at 8:30, so we'll kind of, we'll be discussing the bylaw.
Thursday.
Oh yeah, Thursday, sorry, tomorrow's Wednesday, Thursday.
Who are you meeting with?
It's the working group that we have, so it'll be Ken, Nathan, Janet Provodakis.
Okay, the usual.
Charlie, yes, that group.
You gotta speak, talk specifically about the 750.
Yes, and, and actually, one thing that I, we'll be talking with that group as well is there's two other items in, within that section that we'll be talking about to see if, do we need to strike those or leave them for now and see how it has effect later down the road? As well is, so, when looking at the multi, the, the table of use regulations, Ken and I have looked at it with Janet on this and they've already come up with, or they've added an updated version of the table of uses on what we think would be the best proposal for the changes. There's possibility that we will have to have meetings with some other boards to discuss them.
Definitely, absolutely.
Just to put it, make sure that everyone's on the same page. And so, in terms of the, what's being brought to town meeting, as of right now, due to spring being such a busy town meeting, it's already got like 30-something articles because of the budget, it's the, you know.
We're really looking at fall.
So, well, so for the spring, we have, we have four articles that we can bring. As of right now, I have the zoning article, zoning map update, which is one. The zoning board of appeals has one, which is an update within the bylaw constituting, uh, the diff, um, how many members are going, are on that board. And to touch on, uh, Ken actually sent me an email.
Yeah.
Last week. And, uh, so Town Council, you're right, that section in the state bylaw, state, um.
Yeah, forty-eight.
Yeah, forty-eight. Uh, it refers to how many board members, but it says three or five. We have to, um, put into our bylaw how many members they are. So in ours, it's five, but with one alternate. So we have to specify that in our zoning bylaw.
And that's because you heard it from, uh?
Town Council has already, has a fine on that one.
What if we don't agree with them?
I agree with that.
Matter to anybody in the?
It does. If we, it needs to be written somewhere in the, the town bylaw. It was already there.
So it was there before we?
Yeah, it was there before twenty eighteen, I think it was, when you guys, uh, read it. Yeah. It just was left out.
So we blame Judy Barrett then if it was left out, I guess. And what the, my, the reason I was trying to double-check this and get over it was because there seems to have been a, um, established amount of articles that we could put in was established at four by the Town Managers Department. So once that was established at four, and I, we lost two. That meant that the subgroup that we're working on was only gonna be in a position to offer two more articles. But I wanted, I think we wanted to offer three. So I was trying to get that one out so we could put a third one in that was more proactive than, in other words, I'd leave that one out.
Yeah.
To me, I'd put it in the fall or someplace else because who's gonna?
It's, 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 it's something that has.
If I had a choice between that one and anything else we're working on, accessibility, what do they call it, inclusionary housing, the seven fifty, the, the table, all those, which I think are priorities, I'd say that one goes to the fall.
And if the town voted on it back prior to two thousand eighteen and there hasn't been a vote since.
Who's gonna question us whether the, the state law says you can have three or five and we already have five?
And I, I, I do understand that, but I also need to.
You're gonna do your job.
I, I, I need to be aware that we're not the only board and our, our, you know, we're not gonna be the only people who want articles being brought. So I have to be conscious of that. So.
You said four, you gave us two. What are the other two?
So, and then the other two are for the working group that we're working on. So at this, at this moment, it's the change in the table of use regulations and this, and the removal of the seven fifty.
Oh, 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 I get it. And then.
So those are the two articles. Cause they're separate articles. They're separate sections. So you can't combine those articles.
Yeah, everyone has to be a separate article on its own.
Unless like i- if we were making changes to six point three where the seven fifty is and we were doing another change under C and H and F, that's different because it's all under the same section.
So do you think that for the fall, we can come up with some suggestions regarding the issues of, uh, multifamily and an additional A1, A2?
So that's, that's actually.
That is the table. Beautiful. I'm sorry, forgive me. Uh, how about the parking part though?
So, well.
Discuss that.
I think that, um, for the fall, if we, if we had a good, um, uh, orator, uh, at the table, it would help to present, uh, but I think these articles, um, and the issues with parking, uh, dense housing, multi, you know, potentially looking into being a little more friendly to multifamilies, all, all in. My interest would be mostly in the downtown and we're gonna, we're gonna bat around how, how many, which are the As we extend out to A, A1 or A2? But that they need to be presented, I, I think it's a great opportunity in the fall to present a story of here is affordability. Here's, you know, less housing, fewer cars, um, you know, kind of hit the, hit the headline story that Air, Air is on a path to be an affordable town with a great infrastructure, water, utilities, sewer, and public transit, walkable downtown amenities. Right? I think, I think you can make a, a story. And then, and then if it's, if it's four, if it's ten articles, they all fall under that, um, that, that rubric.
So the one thing I would just say on that is, so I think we want to do all that prior to town meeting. Like a meeting as a presentation to, to boards and to people on a public forum.
The bow on, the bow on the, the gift to the town is going to then summarize it.
Yes, yes.
That, exactly. Cause you don't wanna do a long presentation.
Exactly.
It should be, here's the headline, you know, Air is an affordable town where you don't have to own a car. You don't, you, you, you can, you can walk to restaurants and, and you're, and services, the, the, the water pressure is great.
That is a big thing. I'm telling you.
That's right.
When I was buying my house, that was one of the things you check, make sure that the water.
Really?
So here's, here's a handful of articles.
You don't have good water.
Let's discuss.
I know.
Oh yeah, it's huge. Kidding me? Ken, Ken, Ken.
That's how I would pitch it. I would just get these two that we're gonna, that we can get in that are really important, you know, the priorities.
Yes.
Uh, get those two in, but then pitch, uh, a unified story, uh, a vision, uh, for the fall.
I agree.
Definitely.
And so I can give a, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just wanna touch on one more thing. We were talking about the parking, um, looking at the parking regs. I actually, so I spoke with, uh, Carly today and got approval on being able to, uh, purchase the sixth edition for the I, the new parking I T E generation.
Okay.
Um, so I'm gonna be, uh, buying that so that I can start looking at the parking regs.
What is the, I'm sorry, what is?
So I T E is basically, it's the, um, it's what all transportation engineers or traffic engineers use to, uh, calculate trips, uh, trips for land uses, uh, parking generation. It's basically everything is combined into that one big manual. And you can refer back to it to, you know, when you're doing different land uses, multifamily, affordable, um, all these things. So actually Affordable just got its own new land use code. So now it has its own like parking generation, uh, that you can refer to as opposed to just calling it multifamily. So they've been expanding on it and this is the sixth gen that just came out in October. Um, so it'll have updated parking regulation, you know, parking numbers as to what you, what they're looking for, um, for, say, office spaces, one thousand for, you know, four parking spaces per thousand. That's, we'll see if that's the same. Maybe it's lower, maybe it's changed. So.
You mean the same as what we have in our regulations?
Yes.
You wanna use that as a comparison to what we have?
Yes, use it as a comparison.
District like the Town of Air.
Correct.
So we ran into this when we did the D M G project. They did a traffic study. They hired an engineer. But they used parking things from east of here. That was part of the discussion.
Yeah.
They were trying to adopt. So people came back and said, that's not what is really going on in the Town of Air. You know, we have, how do we look at it closer for the town? So that's good.
Yeah. And what the I T E does is basically it looks at nationwide. So it looks at everything nationwide and it brings it all into data points and then they put it all together. And they give you these new calculations as to what they're looking at average nationwide. And they also look at it like depending on if you're living in a metropolitan area, rural area, they break it down that much too. So we can look at it and really see, all right, are our parking regs where they need to be? Are they too high? Are they too low?
Okay, good.
Yeah, I just wanna make one comment on the parking before we move on. And I think it's very important for people in Town Hall, starting with the first person that walks into Town Hall and has a question about parking, that the planning board still does have a lot of ability to waive certain regulations about parking. And they shouldn't get discouraged right off the bat because it says such and such, you go to section, whatever it is, nine.
Nine point.
And, you know, folks are gonna use that, engineers and lawyers who are digging, they'll find that. So even though we know the parking may be restricted in the way it's texted in the book, there's always that chance for us to use the waivers or to make an adjustment or look at it more deeply so that the project doesn't get killed. That's all I'm saying.
And, and just to touch on that, to use the, the, the West Main Street project, you know, the issue there was.
Or they were trying to fold it into inclusionary housing.
Was, yeah, yes, there was that, but also the fact that they were using, there was a lot of waivers being requested to make the number meet that one-to-one for each unit, which is like a bare minimum you would want. So that's like the trouble on there. Like there's projects where we'll get, projects where, when they come in and they have, oh, you know, all, they have, say it's a plaza, shopping plaza has all these different uses. When you calculate it up, it's a thousand parking spaces, you know, let's just say that. There's, there's ways of working with the, the board. We can figure out what's the number that we feel could be, it could be lower. Could there be parking, you know, requirements in the sense of like some sharing between, you know, what, what time does this, oh, building? Will this be opening? You know, what time will they be closing? Like, so in, in Maynard, the Maynard Crossings project that I did, so we did that one and that had almost twelve hundred parking spaces. That was required. We, and what we did was looking at the, the uses, we tried to get a spec, uh, a specific in the uses that we were gonna be proposing in there as we could to try to find what number we would actually be, you know, closer at. So we had a waiver of, it was like a hundred and fifty parking spaces. But in the, when you look at the full picture of it, it's really not that big of a waiver.
Cause you stole a thousand fifty.
Exactly. So it's like, yes, maybe that sounds like a lot in the, in the, you know, a hundred and fifty parking spaces, that's a lot. But when you think about it in the grand scheme of the full project, it's really not. And that's, you know, that gives us the ability to, to look at each project individually, look at each project in, in specifically what the uses are and see, are our regs too high or too low? We could always allow for waiver on that.
Excellent. So one of the things that, you know, thinking about the year ahead, I guess for me personally, I think my goal would be to cooperate, Danny, Ken, everyone else on getting all this stuff fixed, this stuff, the regulatory bylaw stuff is the number one priority of the proactive things that we can do besides the stuff that, applications that come in. That would be my number one goal for next year and I'm sure stuff will be coming in. Just to give you an update on the Stormwater Enterprise Fund Group, uh, as you know, we're revisiting that. There was an enterprise fund. It was never funded. Then it was deleted. Now it's come back. And the reason this whole issue exists is because we have a number of culverts that are failing. These are large capital expenses. And the most efficient way of addressing this is through an enterprise fund rather than ad hoc proposition, two and a half overrides for the capital necessary per project. So this is the more fiscally responsible route, but of course it's a difficult one because it means a fee and another annual fee. And, and, and I'm sure no one, no one's excited about that, but it is necessary. So where we are is where we're, the, the, Dan, Vince, of course, is leading the group. We have a professional consultant who's done a lot of these before. And, um, I, the latest important news is that we've, and you probably are aware of this, but it's, we're moving our, our town warrant from this, the spring meeting to next fall because the spring is so packed. And it's also the big budget one. So we're gonna go to the fall. And in a way that's, and it is a blessing because it gives us more of a time to do the public outreach. So I'm working very carefully with Dan, Robert and others to think about how we're gonna do the launch, you know, how we're gonna address the public. And in fact, right now, I've been working for the last two weeks trying to get a speaker to talk about water. You would think this would be easier. I've already talked to like forty-four people and always like, oh, no, not me. Here's somebody else, else to go and okay. But eventually I'll get there. Uh, but that's where we are. So we're looking at the fall meeting rather than the spring. And, um, we're gonna do a, a big public outreach. In fact, one of them, one of the things they're gonna do is come to our board and present. And they're gonna go to all the different boards and, and talk, et cetera. So that's where that is.
So you have, you have bought into the, when you opened your statement up, you, you have bought into the fact that you think the enterprise fund is the most fiscally responsible way to do it. That's what your basis of your, of your propos, of your discussion is?
I don't wanna speak for the full, yeah, I think that is the general gist of it. If you think about what the alternatives might be, which would be an increase in the taxes for the general fund, for instance, would be one way to do it. Another is, you, you know, um, is the two and a half overrides, another would be, I don't know, pursuing grants is gonna work.
Definitely gonna be part of it.
Yeah, it's gotta be, but it's not gonna be the full.
Grants are something that you're always going to be doing. So.
Yeah, I mean, always, that's always there, but I, I think that there's a sense that, you know, we can't just depend on that. So I, I think the general consensus is the enterprise fund seems to be the most responsible way. And of course, what it, what it does is it's not like, oh, we get the money and do everything. It's gonna be staggered, of course, over five to ten years with depending on priorities, et cetera. But, so the idea is that lots of small stuff continually, but every, maybe every two to three years, a major project. You know what I mean? Like the West, West Main Street culvert, which desperately needs to be done.
Well, that's good. That's millions. That's coming through grants and everything.
That's coming through.
The town, that was a special.
Well, so there are other culverts. There are other things that are collapsing.
You don't even know half the stormwater systems we have. That's part of the reason why we need an enterprise.
Well, there's, there's a lot. There's a lot going on and, and it, what's interesting is that once again, the Town of Air is on, is ahead of the curve. Just as we were with the, uh, what is it? What was in the water? What, what does that be? PFAS? Just with the PFAS, just with the OSRD, with so many other things. What's that?
MBTA communities.
MBTA communities.
We are well.
This is, we are well ahead on that. We're, we're, so this is a fourth area where we're kind of ahead. There are a few towns that have gone and, and have done this seriously. But once again, we are ahead of the curve on this and, uh, which I'm proud of, which is great. But again, you know, that means people are soon gonna be hearing about, oh my gosh, is an additional fee for stormwater? You know, like holy mackerel. So it's, it's gonna be, uh, it's not, it's not a shoeing. I guess I'll put it that way.
Nope.
But it's long overdue because the United States is suffering from decades of neglect in its infrastructure. And it's sad that now it's on the local scale to deal with it. That's an, an issue for another day. So that's where we are with that. Um, other, other things if we're, yeah, go, go ahead, Dan.
MBTA zoning, just.
Yeah, where are we with that?
Just brought that up. Um, so, uh, we actually have a meeting tomorrow. Um, did you get that invitation from Alan? Tomorrow at, just pull up my calendar. It was, I believe, at ten. Um, yes, eleven. So here. And then basically it'll be a meeting with, um, Janet Provodakis, Alan, Alicia, you and I. And we'll be discussing the economic feasibility study that was, uh, given to us from, um, MRPC. It was the one that was done through Lexington. Uh, they did it. So we're gonna go through that and, uh, discuss that. That is the economic feasibility study. Basically, we are required to do that if we have more than ten percent, a more of than a ten percent, uh, requirement on affordable housing. Uh, since we have twenty percent, we, we get kicked into that. And so we need to get that study done prior to us making the submission for our compliance, which we need to be in compliance at, by the end of, um, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, good. So that means tomorrow?
Yes.
At eleven.
I, I, I'm not sure why you did not receive the invitation.
No, Outlook has been a little tricky. I don't know if you guys have had experience, any challenges with it, but it has been a little weird.
It has been. It's, I've been having troubles, which I started to figure out.
Good. Did anyone, before I move on to the, uh, meeting minutes, did anyone have any thoughts about the, the next year? Things that they wanted to work on that we haven't talked about yet?
Do we just wanna briefly touch on?
Oh, good Lord, of course. I'm sorry. Yeah, so just one more. And then let's talk about the major minor.
I think, um, yeah, that's, that's something I would like to do is to be on whatever the, uh, once our working group is folded, however that continues, uh, to bring in, um, whatever this, the, 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 uh, public messaging and presentation to the Fall Town Meeting, uh, wrapping, wrapping up, um, wrapping up the affordable, affordable study and making Air an attractive location for, uh, for downtown development would be, um, would something I'd gladly participate in through the, the next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And, and so that economic feasibility study that we will be doing will, will actually be very helpful for affordable housing. Um, it's, it's gonna have a lot of information like that. That's gonna be very helpful. Um, it's, it's going to have a lot of information like that. That's going to be very helpful.
Okay, great. So Danny, want to take us through the, the issues at the major versus minor site plan review?
Yeah. So, um, so what I did here was basically, I just, I, I looked at a good variety of different towns, um, different makeups.
So you know, actually take us back a step.
Yes.
Why are we doing this at all? Just remind us what the, the context is.
We don't have it.
That's correct. We, so we do not have a minor site plan review and, uh, we're, we're not the only town that doesn't. There's a lot of towns that have not gotten to that yet. And basically what, what the difference is going to be is so major site plan review will require a public hearing with, you know, legal noticing and public, uh, public notice, a butter's notifications, all that kind of stuff. Minor site plan review is a, some towns do it differently. Some minor is just a public meeting as opposed to a public hearing. Some towns do a public hearing, uh, with some notification, but, um, it's just a legal notice and not a butter notification. So there's some differences in which how we want to really do that. I think with minor, with it being, and that's the name, minor, I think going the public meeting route is, is, is going to be the best way because of course, you know, it's still going to be on the agenda. So people will still know what's on there. This, the differences on that is so minor would be like a small parking lot or a, a lot that has an office building of a thousand square feet. Or a res- you know, small, a smaller residential development, like a three family house. That's what you would see under minor. Those kind of triggers of the, the, they're not huge projects, but they're bigger than your typical single family house. So they need some review, you know, and, and that way, they're not so dragged down with the whole process of, uh, major site plan review has quite a long period. It's, you know, there's a longer period of time.
Absolutely.
This kind of makes it a little bit quicker. Um, there's not as, uh, as long of a waiting period for people. There's not as an extensive review as, as there would be on a major site plan review because it's not as much.
It's a lot less expensive.
Correct. Yeah, it's a lot less expensive. You're not paying for as much, uh, your engineers to, all the revisions, all the meetings, you know, it, it reduces a lot of the costs and it expediates. It, it makes it much quicker for them.
So why'd you pick these five towns? But I'm just, uh, just curious.
You know, just, uh, so some of them were just the towns that, uh, they're bigger towns that I'd worked, I've done work in that I knew had minor site plan review as well. Some of the towns were just, um, some of the towns that just had it and, and I couldn't, some of the towns that I couldn't find that had, um, minor. And, uh, they also, some of these were pretty different. So I wanted to give a different, a look at how some towns look at it. Cause like if we look at Hingham, like they require major site plan review for all special permits within their residential zonings for like A2 and A3. And then the way they look at the, uh, minor projects, it's more land disturbance on 5,000 square feet or, or less. Or alteration of drainage pattern of 2,500 square feet or less. So some towns look at it differently than others.
I noticed that. It's quite a variety variation.
One of the things that's interesting here is I'm not sure that any town of this group required a change of use to require a special, uh, uh, site plan review.
So actually one, one of them did, cause I was.
We have that as our first, first thing.
Medway was the, Medway did require that.
Okay.
So theirs was, uh, new construction or any alteration, reconstruction, renovation, you know, all the way at the end. Or use, which involves one of the, or change, or use. Uh, no, that was, that's, that's the use one. There is.
The first, the first bullet under major.
Which one? Medway?
Yeah, the first.
Change in use of, change in use.
Okay. So that, that's, that one's close to us. But a lot of the elements weren't very close to us.
But they add a caveat underneath those, if you see, the cha- the change in the use of,
Of certain size.
Of a certain size. Correct. Yes. Addition of 2,500 square feet or 20 new parking spaces.
Right. So American true merit would, would be under this.
What's that?
Yeah, they had a change of use, but.
Change of use, but it was such a small, yeah, small building that, on Park Street.
I was wondering, like, say, like, one of the things that I think about ma- major versus minor is not just scale, but potential impact or interest of the neighbors, right? You know, when I think about a minor project, that's one that really neighbors needn't be, um, concerned about because it is so minor. And by, and so in certain sense, what I think what a major is is something, well, there's significant interest in the, in, in the abutters, neighbors and us. So I'm thinking about something like, suppose even if something were quote minor, but there had to be blasting involved. For example, should we say something like that should always be a major review or should, that, that's not fair?
I believe one of these, um, towns did require, I think there was.
You don't have a getting at?
Yeah, that if there was, uh, blasting required. Really thought one of these did discuss blasting.
The reason I bring it up is that when I think about the spaces that remain in air, um, a lot of them are going to be difficult, challenging spaces and, 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 and you can expect that blasting will be a part of that as, as space becomes less and less available. And that's always controversial and it's always challenging.
The only trouble with blasting, you don't always know you need to blast until you're in the ground. Sometimes you're. I agree with you. You know, you, you hope you've done test bitchings and all that. Sometimes you, you, you're, your bucket's right here and the ledge, uh, cropping's right over here. So you miss it. It, it happens. It's just. So it's tough with the, with the blasting when it comes to that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to throw off the whole conversation, but I was just thinking, you know, we think about what the, we're not going to come to a decision today, of course, it's the beginning, but just think about the kinds of things we think about what major minor is. Not just about the overall size, but there's also certain qualities that, that would change it too. And I think that, you know, you noticed here, a lot of them made real distinctions about slope, you know, which I thought was wise.
I mean, do you, go ahead. I was going to bait the question. Um, so as, in your professional opinion, what you're trying to do here is for us to develop a minor site plan review process, which we don't have now. So basically every project that comes in now that falls into these categories needs to do a site plan. But I guess what we're trying to get at is, is there a way for that to be downsized for the smaller projects?
Exactly.
But we don't have the ability to do that now.
Correct. We don't. No, not yet. Because as of right now, in our bylaw, we don't have minor site plan, or not in our bylaw, in our planning board rules and regs, we don't have minor site plan as, as a spelled out section of what the triggers are, what the criteria is. And so I guess, so the first thing to, to, to do is figure out what the triggers are. What are, what are going to be the differentiation between major and minor? What triggers minor? What triggers major? And so that's what this is kind of the first step on.
So let's say I end up with a minor. Okay. What you're basically trying to do is say it's a minor, therefore it can either be approved right through your office, may not even have to come to the board if it's small enough. Or is it always going to come to the board?
I would say it would always come to the board.
Yeah, that's my anticipation.
Even minor. I mean, unless, so the one caveat I would say is if there was an administrative change, like meaning a sense of, oh, they, they're, they have a project that they're proposing this and they make a minor change of.
But that's after it's already gone through.
Exactly. That would be the only way it would be approved through, through, uh, through me, I think.
Okay.
There could be like temporary dwellings that really, uh, let me, let me back up and, and kind of go a little bit where you were going, Ken, which is, what is the value we are trying to bring to the applicant? And to our, and, and, and to everybody involved, but why is it going to be less costly? What, what is, what is in, in, in our current major and only site planner view? What are the cost elements when it is, especially when it, and we can, we've seen examples from hot dogs to welding to, uh, this, this new three unit apartment building, I think may be pretty close to some of these charac- characteristics. What is the value for Ally? That she's going to be, she's going to be excited to come to air because there is, there, there is a cost effective way to, as a, because you, you, you're having, in one case you have a, a DMG, you know, big organization with, with consultants and contractors who can come and do, and, and, and hire great local lawyers. But then we also do have these.
Smaller.
Yeah. And you want to encourage that, that father, daughter, um, develop, you know, come in, come and invest, make an investment in air. And so what is the real value for them?
Yeah. So with the difference between minor and major, the, the, the benefits of minor typically it's one meeting. Typically you're reviewing it for one meeting because I've, for, you know, I've done most of the review and I've already met with them and given them comments that need to be addressed because it's a smaller project. So there's not as of an extensive review that is required, you know?
It would be less engineering, less legal, fewer legal fees, fewer engineering fees compiled.
Yeah.
I mean, you're right. There's engineering still, which remember by definition, if it's smaller, it's going to be smaller engineering.
But now it, it sounds like it's going to be pretty cookie cutter, right? That, hey, Justin submits this, this and this. Danny approves it. It's going to be like an A and R, right? Where.
Similar. It's going to be similar. I mean, of course, you know, there will be, I'm sure there will be a project that, you know, the board throws, throws a, you know, something at the applicant and they don't have that answer and they need that.
Right. But if you have a high probability, especially if they hit these bullet points that you most likely will get a pass and approval.
Correct.
That, that, I think that's, that's a great value to the applicant.
So Danny, one of the things I was wondering about is that when it comes to the quantitative stuff, you know, like the threshold numbers.
Yeah.
How do we determine what the right thresholds are for a town like Air as opposed to Medway, for Hingham, et cetera? You know, like, I didn't even know how to think about it correctly and that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. Um, so the way I would look at it is, uh, when it's coming to square footage, we would have to look at what, what properties are still, you know, open for development, which ones are ripe for redevelopment? And looking at what can fit on those properties and, uh, looking at the square footage, typically when you're looking, when you're seeing the, the triggers and you're looking at addition of square footages for major versus minor, it's usually around that 2,500 to 3,000 square feet is, is usually that trigger of, if you're above that, you're major. If you're under that, you're minor. And that's typically because you don't build, new construction is typically not, if you're building an office building or like a, a small office, it's not 500 square feet, 600 square feet. Typically you're building a building that's about 1,000, 1,500 square feet, you know, 2,000 square feet. If it's a small, if it's small. We can also look at triggers of, as a, of parking spaces. Uh, you know, some towns in here actually has, have triggers like if you increase, i- i- if, if the, if you're proposing a project that has more than 20 parking spaces, that's major. If you have, you know, under that, you're minor. I don't know if 20 is the, the right number, but like, you know, as, as, as an example, we can look at it that way. You can look at it, um, it, it, it can be dependent on the use that's being built, which we already currently have, um, like the change of use. That's a perfect example of a minor with 27, 29 Harvard. Perfect use of a minor. Cause the, all, everything that we, we spoke about at this meeting with them, we could have handled pro- outside, prior to the meeting. Bring it in. They're changing this use. They got this. They want to do this. And then leave it to the board of, all right, well, whatever final questions you guys have to finally address and then have a decision for that. Because that project, they're really only changing the use and fixing some of the parking spaces. So it's not really that big of a project, but it still has to go through all the steps, all of the publication and all the legal notices and butter's notices. It, it really doesn't, uh, how do I, it, it's, it doesn't serve them the best way, I think. It's not the best way for the town to serve the, the applicant.
This is very good. It's, I like this discussion. So when you put together, first of all, right at the moment, we don't have any language that says major or minor. We simply have site plan. So I guess you're proposing that eventually we would have the word major and the minor's in there.
Correct.
Rather than just site plan and minor.
Correct. We would have two separate applications.
There would be two applications and then these regulations, which we have now are basically all the regular site plan regulations. Are you basically saying that we would have a number of, another three or four pages just for the minor, basically?
So yes.
You don't have to do, it's going to be a meeting rather than a hearing. Now, do you want, do you, you were, before your time, these were voted, we voted at this board, site plan review does not require a hearing in the state of Massachusetts. You know that, right?
You mean for our, our regs?
Site plan regulation in the state of Massachusetts does not require a hearing.
Yeah.
We overcame that and made it a higher bar by, by putting in our regulations that it required a hearing. That was John De Jim Fay.
That's, that's a, that, yeah, yeah, that's state law. There's, there's a case on that.
Right. But there is no requirement for hearing. It's simply meeting and it's, it's basically an approved project goes through a review process, site plan review.
It's, it's site plan approval. It's not, yeah, yeah.
And I'm pretty sure we also put in the butter notification as a requirement. Again, maybe not. So they wouldn't have to do butter notification.
Correct.
So they could do it as a meeting, just put it on the agenda, that kind of stuff.
That's correct.
So you would line that up. Danny would be able to write up those requirements, separate set of requirements or whatever.
Yeah.
And so the final twist I've got to this is when we change, and this is again a loaded question. When we change these regulations, do those need a hearing?
So.
Does that meeting need a hearing or?
I actually just was having this conversation with Jonathan the other day. I, I believe that we under, there's like a, there's a section in here that it refers to that you guys followed Massachusetts general law, section, something. And I looked at that and I was like, that's not a real thing. That's, that section's not actually the section I think that's supposed to be referenced, but based on what I can see, it's not required as a, a public hearing is not required.
That's what I thought.
But it's always best to have a public hearing to allow, so that there is some notification, so that the public can see what we're doing. I just feel transparency is always the best option when it comes to rules and regulations. People are going to have their input if they want to come in and have their input, but typically when you see, when a town, uh, residents sees something that, oh, they're going to be doing site plan review regulations and, or amending them, they don't really care.
Exactly.
You know?
All right.
For the most part, in, in my experience, they usually don't. You have your few that do, but typically you, yes, you wouldn't have to have a public hearing, but it's always best to.
But you would make a recommendation to us that we have a public hearing.
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
I think, um, what Nathan said earlier is really relevant that the whole, the, one of the real points of this is to make it easier for that quote mom and pop kind of situation, small scale, that we're not going to burden them with the same kind of requirements for a major project. They're typically done by big, large and, you know, significant firms with all, all kinds of resources that obviously, you know, one, one or two people are not going to have.
Correct. Like, like specifically like a traffic, like a traffic, uh, study or circulation plan and parking plan. I would not require that. That would not be anything that would be required for this, you know, or a, a, you know, a proposed landscaping plan. Cause at that point you're having some, it's such a small spot, you're probably only going to have one or two landscaped beds anyways. So it's like, there's certain things that wouldn't, we wouldn't require like that.
I would, if I, I would look into non-conforming lots and use the fire department as an example. Because as, as you said earlier, Jonathan, you know, there's some vacant properties, undeveloped properties. I suspect that there's non-conformance about some, some of those properties as we saw with the fire department. And so would that be a trigger to move you from minor to major?
Yes.
And, and that could be, that could be a deterrent.
Yeah. The, the only thing with that is, is if it's a non-conforming law. Yeah, eh, eh, the, the only thing with that is, is if it's a non-conforming lot in, well, not, not that the lot's non-conforming, because the lot can be non-conforming, the, the, if you're proposing a new building on a, on that lot, it can be non-conforming.
Correct.
But, if you're going to put the building in the same exact location and make it not, not, more non-conforming, you know, that, requiring a ZBA permit, does that trigger you having to have a major?
I would just look at all the things you went through with the fire department, where the parking was constrained, uh, the lots constrained.
Yeah.
And are there, are there properties like that, that those small investors are interested in, or could be interested in? But, we can make it, we can make it more attractive with, um, maybe, maybe this is one, it's not gonna be one day, one night, one meeting, it might kick over to two, but it's not.
Yeah.
Traffic study.
Yeah, it's not traffic, it's not all that stuff. Yeah, and, and, and to, on that point, I'd say, you know, when it comes to, uh, I think we would just, I, I think what I could do is, as our site plan review, uh, our new application requires a meeting with, with, uh, myself and Charlie, that would still be required for whatever application, if it was a minor, we could look at it and say, oh, you know, this, this is non-conforming, but, you know, there's some constraints here, but it doesn't lead to the, uh, you know, lead to that major trigger. So it would still, I think we would still have a inability to look at it before the application is made, and I can always meet with the board at, at our next, you know, public hearing and, and discuss it with the board at that point and say, you know, what do you guys think as well? And that gives us a little bit more ability to, to have that flexibility.
Yeah, my preference would be that they walk into the, maybe with Charlie and meet with Danny, and that, right then, they can decide it's minor.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
I don't think it should come to us if they decide it's minor. That is a step that helps people right off the bat.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And then, you guys, then it comes to us with the right application, you've made this, you and Charlie have made the decision.
Oh, that's the whole point, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I, I'm trying to leave out the fact that it comes to us to make a decision between minor and.
No, 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 they would do it. I think that was just meaning, I think that was just that once weird.
Well, there was something, there was a lot of other things going on over there, but this, this is the, you know, this is our regulations here.
Yes.
Anyway, the, I think the thing that's important here is, is another one, number four, you know, any, any use requiring a special permit. So in that case, they did require a special permit, so they would've had to go for the whole deal, no matter what, so that, that's important language right there, if it requires a special permit, it's gotta be the full operation. But what we found out over there, and, and what he, what Nathan was referring to is that we ended up having to issue waivers. So we issued a waiver for the landscaping, because the landscaping and our requirements was more than you could do on that lot. So, we, they, that's why it got a little tricky. So someone sitting in the meeting who heard us waive the landscaping said, wait a minute, well, you know, why would they be waiving the landscaping? Well, we waived it because they showed us where they were gonna plant, but it didn't comply exactly with the wording of our landscape requirement, so we had to waive the requirement in the site plan regulation, which that's where it got tricky. You, you're trying to make waivers in the regula-, it's not a waiver to the bylaw, which people think it is, but it's not, it's just our regulation.
Waiver.
So, I think your point is valid, that if we can, I'm trying to make the point that if we can decide in advance, that also eliminates us having to give out waivers, because it's a minor.
Exactly.
So if we get the, get the list on the minor of what it is, you know, then it makes it easier for the applicant, easier for us, but we're not gonna let anything go by if we think it's a major, we're gonna make it go to, we're gonna make them go to the major if we think it's really a problem. But I wanted to point out one thing, Danny, when you, when you're changing this.
Can I ask a question about what you just said, though? Cuz I don't know if I'm fully following. When, when you're pointing out the special permit
Yep.
and you're pointing out there.
Right.
Those regulations, we don't have major or minor, so I think what I heard you just say is if there's a special permit involved, it'll always be a major.
That's what it says here, in the current regulations.
Right, but we're, we're looking at amending them, so would that?
No, no, that's different. What I'm talking about when I say special permit, it was being that table.
Right.
That it needs a special permit.
I think she's saying, and, eh, we don't have a major and a minor.
Right.
But.
But you're not saying
I think what he, what he is saying.
Major is always special permit.
No, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is if there's another, if there's another requirement on the project,
Yeah.
which says that, that, that generates a need for a special permit.
Yeah.
Then you need to go major.
So that's basically, he's saying, he's suggesting that that be a trigger for major.
Well, it is right now.
Well, it's, it's, it's your site plan review.
Excuse me.
That's, and that's what she was confused about.
But are we in agree, did, is everyone also agreeing with, you made it as both statements, but?
I think he's saying in current, right now.
But based on what Nathan's saying, we could at least have a discussion, a special permit, could that ever be a minor?
I, I mean, we, this is, this is why we're, we're talking.
Okay, that's what I thought we were talking about, but that's where I just.
This is why we're talking about these triggers, what is going to be, you know, really, eh, 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 I agree with Ken, a special permit, because it's a majority vote and it's, it's, it's a discretionary permit, a super majority vote, and it's a discretionary permit, I would say it does trigger major.
Sure.
So.
But, you know, w- we can look at it, cuz there, there may be an occurrence in which a special permit doesn't trigger, spe-, uh, you know, I, I'd have to look at it.
Yeah. So thinking about next steps with this, would, would the next step be for you to present, give us a list of what the potential triggers could be? And then that way, we could go through step by step, by step, by which ones and.
I think what I, what would be good for me is, would be, is if everyone can kinda read through this and tell me which triggers you guys like.
Okay.
Yep.
What are your, what are your triggers that you feel,
Yes.
you know, are good for minor, which ones are good for major? And that way, I can look and start compiling, you know, different types of triggers, and then we can start figuring out the nitty gritty of like square footage, uh, special permits, what type of special permits are, if there's special permits that don't need it, you know, um.
Can I ask you a question off of that? I'm sorry to interrupt you, Danny. So, when I'm seeing some of these, they have some weird random things, it's like, well, this one thing makes you automatically a minor site pla-, so can you help me get an understanding of why they would do that, like, like installation of electric vehicle charging stations with digital advertising signage, you're a minor, like, like, how did they not have language that, like, that, and that's really modern, like, that's like a modern thing? And then like, the next one does the same thing with marijuana retailers, but like?
Yeah, that's, so that's framing, so.
It's on the size of, go ahead.
Yeah, so for, for the, um, for the digital, the signage, because that one typically, uh, signage does not require site plan review or anything. But when it comes to, uh, the, I think the reason they want that in there for minor, cuz it's a charging station, so there's batteries and with this whole new issue of putting out an electric battery fire is, is, you can't really.
Yeah.
And that, so like, there's, there's components of, of, of that that go into that that require more, you know, a minor review. Um, and that's why they have like the different tier of the battery.
But that's what I'm trying to understand, is I think I went into this conversation thinking we were treating everything like a major, and that this type of project was allowing us to bring a subset and a minor into it, but it feels like some of what I'm seeing here is taking something that wouldn't have been a site plan review, but now giving it a minor?
So, that's what I, that's the way I read it, so.
Some towns do that.
I read the Medway thing on the first page.
Yeah.
As something happened and someone came in to put in a charging station and there was no way to review it.
Right, you're gonna read this and you're gonna go, oh, they did this in two thousand and nineteen.
Basically, went into the building inspector and pulled a permit.
Right.
And somebody said, wait a minute, that's not enough authority.
You need a site plan review.
So we're gonna, we're gonna put it in here as a minor.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking they just kept adding little, as, as stuff came up.
So are we considering that, or have we?
We, we just put a s- electric charging station in the, it was nothing, they went to the building, an electrical inspector and put the thing in.
Remember, each town is.
Every town's got a different.
No, I understand, but that's what I'm trying to ask, is as I'm reading this, is that something we're considering? Cuz we haven't mentioned that before.
It's a good point, things that don't hit site plan review today.
Are we trying to, is it?
Are we trying to pull those things in?
I don't personally think there's anything that we need to try to drag in right now.
I don't think so.
Cuz there's really, I haven't seen any occasions in which there's something where it's like, oh, that's kind of obscure, does it need a review, does it not?
Right.
I don't think we're doing that, I think what we wanna look at is look, I mean, there may be some triggers in here that are not exactly what we have, but they're similar in, in, in def- in type of what they're looking for. So that's more of what I would want you guys to look at, like, not the, the battery ones. We, we're, we're not trying to bring those in.
No, okay, that's, well, I just.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 and, and I just wanna make sure you, everyone.
That's what I wanted to go, something to read it correctly.
No, no, I don't wanna bring more to the planning board that's, are not required, just to make more.
You have a candy store, we're gonna need to look at you.
That's, exactly, I don't wanna.
I mean, that the triggers are, the big ones are the gross square feet, floor area, then the square feet of surface, it's under a.
Expansion.
And, and those are the things you're looking for.
Yeah, there's like land clearing, like.
The land, I can tell you that the number three on ours, declaring and grading of more than ten thousand, that was only put there, uh, a few years back.
Yeah.
It's, it's very recent.
So maybe that's one.
Because before, before there was an air silver two that was not there.
See? Okay, so there's, there's, there's yourself, there's one.
There were triggers for some of this stuff, and basically, the, the point was that, wait a minute, anyone who clears ten thousand square feet of land and just rips it up, or does something, they should come and have a site plan, you know?
But, maybe what that, maybe that ten thousand one is, is a minor, because it's.
Like over here, they say it's minor until you get to twenty thousand.
Exactly.
So.
You know, maybe we, we could look at staggering.
I like the ten, because I just, I think anyone should come, if they're gonna do that much.
Land clearing.
Clearing and grubbing.
I agree.
They should be.
You know? And we can look at it as the numbers, you know, for, for it, we could co- make it coincide with, you know, the stormwater management permits and we could look at it, you know, how that gets triggered, so that when a minor site plan review, you're also getting a minor stormwater management permit. So it, it, you know, we could look at it that way.
He does have that in his, right? There is this minor.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
And, and under our bylaw, minor is actually approved by, by myself, by me.
And it's minor stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just one quickly before I forget, Jonathan, if you don't mind.
Please, sir.
The very first sentence, this is ours, the one we have, okay? And I thought this was good cuz I didn't see it in the other ones. It basically says, site plan review by the planning board shall be required for the following uses or activities in all districts. That's the way ours says it. And then, I like that because there's no question that no matter where it happens, you know, it's around town. We don't have to specify, we only see it in a commercial district, or the, or a resident, whatever the district is. But here's the part that's tricky. Number one, and I'm reading, I got midway next to me. Construction alteration, I'm reading ours now, construction alteration or expansion, or change of use, next word, within, which I don't think is, that's a wrong word. It says within a municipal, institutional, commercial, industrial, or multifamily structure. Within the structure? No, I don't think so. So, theirs leaves it out, it just, it basically just says new construction or alteration, reconstruction, renovation, or change of use of.
Right.
So the word, it should be of a.
Municipal, institutional, construction, uh, commercial, industrial, or multifamily structure, yeah.
I don't know why we have the word within there, that's, we can take it out, you know, when we revise it.
And, and I do also, we will event, uh, I think maybe in January, we'll eventually have a meeting about the, you know, planning board rules and regs, and as, and the site plan rules and regs eventually. I think the rules and regulations for site plan will happen further down once we get the minor ready, but the planning board rules and regs, I, there, I have some changes that will be coming to the board.
Okay, cool. Great.
Excellent. November twenty-eight, twenty, twenty, twenty-three minutes, I think the only people who can vote on it would be the ones who are in attendance, right, so that.
Yes, that is.
Oh, wait a minute.
Just two of us.
Wait.
I don't.
Wait, we have to wait.
Then we cannot vote on it.
Cannot, we gotta wait till Jeff comes here.
Was not.
So let's put it for next, on the next agenda, let's not forget, because we need Jeff to vote.
Yeah, yeah, we do. Can't be a majority of those who are at the meeting.
Yes, exactly.
Uh, re as a quorum.
Oh, just one last thing, and it, it's a very brief. You know, Danny and I were talking, it's an idea that Ken had that I, I loved, and that's the, the, uh, at these meetings.
Shocking.
Shocking. My brain is stupid.
Maybe we can spend ten to fifteen minutes on a different body of regulations and stuff to make sure, to have discussions, to make sure all of us understand what the heck is in there. Just as a way, you know, just like, you know, one week, we spent ten to fifteen minutes on a certain portion of the bylaws, another time the regulations. It's just a way to make sure that we got our heads together. As a general thing going on, I think that the town hall is making a great effort to make things more consistent and more consistent experience for anyone approaching town hall for questions, that they're not gonna get, go to four different people and get four different answers. And one of the ways that we can contribute to that simplicity is making sure that here on the table, we have a kind of common understanding of our own rules, and, and the idea, so what I would say is anticipate in future meetings that some time will be set aside to, to go over different parts of the regulations so that we're all in the same place. That's it, so just anticipate that in the year ahead. Yes, sir?
Uh-oh.
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 Can you tell by my expression? We have a problem, a town, electronic problem, that has still not been resolved, the E code three sixty, okay?
Yes.
I went on there today or yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
I click on the table, still the bad, the wrong table.
Mm-hmm.
I click on the dimensions, it, did you know that there's an error in the dimensional one as well?
In the dimensional one?
Yep, it says, it still says a hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Light industrial, for the light industrial.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I can't even explain to you how pissed I am.
Yeah, no, no, I actually.
And I continue to get more pissed every single week. This is an inexcusable
I understand.
Situation. I don't care what you say, and I don't care what it takes, if we were in business, this, and you know as well as I do, cuz you're in the business, like I was, this would be reason to leave the room, get it resolved, don't come back till you get it resolved. If a professional engineer or lawyer or anyone clicks on the new code, our code, brand new, that somebody paid to put it over there, they're still getting the incorrect information.
Let me explain, what, so the problem here, and I understand, can you?
No problem.
No, there is a problem, there is a problem, needs to be fixed. But we can't make them fix it, that's the problem. E code does it when they do it once a year.
Yeah, well, that's unacceptable, I don't care what they say. So we have to find a way around that, cuz we cannot have professional engineers.
Can I ask for my understanding, who's E code?
E code, it's the people who, who handle our online bylaw.
It's a private, it's a private company that does it contracted by the state.
I don't think Julie understands the sequence.
So we pay them, or the state pays them?
No, we pay them, we pay them.
Why are we paying them?
What happened was the town thought in their better, not so great judgment
Yeah.
that we should take our written laws
Yep.
and electronically add them to a statewide system called E three, three code, three sixty.
Three sixty.
Okay.
So when we did that a year ago, effective, so it was a year ago, it was last November, December, I think they decided to do it. They gave all the data to the E code people, and they posted it, but the data that they got may or may not have been all a hundred percent correct, okay? So changes we made subsequent to two thousand eighteen, you know, when we amended different bylaws,
Yep.
and things that we corrected are still shown as being wrong.
Right.
So, so for instance, we still don't even have on our table of use regulations, the West Main Street, West Air Village Form Based Code is not shown as even existing.
Okay.
There's no column for that.
Okay.
Okay, and the dimensional changes which we made, now these things we did through hearings, meetings, hearings, town meetings,
Yep.
the whole bit, and they're still not shown, they're shown incorrect.
They have the.
So I don't care what they say, somebody has to be able to talk to someone over there.
Who's working with them?
Carly has been working closely with them, has been going back and forth with them. I don't have control over that. I give the information, we, we've all had, we've had several meetings with this, about this. We've had like three, and Heather's been there for them too. We don't control E code three sixty, they.
But if it's a breach of contract.
It's not a breach of contact, that's a problem. The problem is, they do it once a year, and that's what the, what the contract is.
Is there any sign off?
I don't know.
What they do, or they just.
I, that is above my pay grade.
Do we know when we negotiate that contract, and do we know when that one time a year is?
I don't.
Wanna work with Carly with me? Or do you want me to work with Carly?
You can.
And, 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 and believe me, I understand the frustration, cuz Heather and I have been dealing with this too, and it's, it's frustrating, but we only have so much we can do.
Okay.
I've never heard of it, like, anything like that.
It's extraordinary.
I mean.
And I can't, you can't get something changed that's wrong, I just, it's, to me, it's unacceptable.
They've told us several times.
It just doesn't make sense.
It's a private company, we can't tell them what to do.
You pay them.
Well, you pay them.
And I understand that, but they, they told me what to do.
Here's an example, what if I went, what if we had a town meeting last spring and we changed the zoning at town meeting? You tell me we couldn't get that cha-, they couldn't change that? When we go to a spring town meeting this year with these zoning titles, and we change them, and they're effective August first, what they get through the attorney.
Put up under the new law section.
What?
They get put up under the new law section.
That's, the new law section of the E code?
Yes.
Is there an erratic section?
You tell, so.
I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you.
Okay, so listen.
Like, I don't have control over this.
I'm trying to get this through, that, it's a frustration for.
And, and so Ken, and I understand you, I, I, I noticed it when I came here. I've been fighting about this since I came here in July. And I'm still trying, so I just want you to understand, like, it's not that I'm not trying to get this done. It's that we are getting, the town is getting pushed back. The town is getting pushed back.
I need him in another fight.
Julie's good at this stuff. Julie can get it.
A nice one, I like you, Carly.
And it's not Carly's fault.
No, it's not, I know, I know, so I'm coming nicely to have the conversation, is what I'm saying, I'm not saying I'm mad at.
Well, it, I'll tell you, it, it's definitely somebody's fault, because whoever wrote a contract, letting anyone that says we do it once a year. And if you make changes, we're not going to do it, shouldn't have signed the contract, that is definitely a problem, because things can change month to month to month.
And then we're liable, the town is liable.
And so it's crazy, that you would say, wait a minute, we only do this once a year, we're a software company, we can only do this once a year, you kidding me?